And we need to turn his phone down.
I shouldn't turn mine over.
Yeah, I gotta turn my phone over. I gotta find mine too.
Everybody ready?
Sure.
Turn the phones down. Okay. All right, we will call to order Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners study session for Wednesday, July 25th, 2018. We will stand for the pledge led by Dean this evening.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Sarah?
Klaus?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Mayor?
Here.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Crawford?
Here.
And I show Gorfulette is excused.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Gorfulette unfortunately sends her regrets. She has had a family emergency and is headed for Florida.
I just wanted me to let you guys know. So now is our chance for first public comment. Sarah, will you read the rules, please?
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the board until called upon by the chairperson. Please be respectful in referring from personal or political attacks.
Okay, thank you. First public comment. Who's, yes, Ms. Max Bauer.
Chris Max Bauer, 503 West State Street, Traverse City, Michigan. I read the Record Eagle article regarding the Drain Commissioner's salary and the Record Eagle made a false statement and I wish to correct it. The Record Eagle states the Drain Commissioner is employed on a $7,200 annual salary based upon a four-hour work week. That is incorrect. Michigan's Drain Code Act states, and there wasn't a Commissioner on this county board that did not know the Michigan Drain Code Act. Michigan's Drain Code Act states the office of the Drain Commissioner shall be furnished at the expense of the county by the Board of Supervisors and shall be maintained at the county seat in which said office, said Commissioner, shall be and remain at least one day per week, such day to be painted on the door of the Commissioner's office and printed or stamped on his stationery. That's eight hours per week. We were all aware of that Drain Code, uh, state law requirement. We have had four years, a mandated lake level issued by Circuit Court Judge Rogers, if memory serves me correctly. That was certainly, uh, made known to everyone in, in the public. And as it was, and even though this eight-hour-a-day, eight-hour-per-week requirement is mandated by state law, we had two other people besides our present Drain Commissioner run for that office believing that they could maintain the county drains. Now, I would also like to point out that when Duck Lake property owners wanted their dam maintained to control lake level, they did a self-assessment, a special assessment, where the Grand Traverse County taxpayers would not be burdened, but that cost would be borne by the property owners that benefited from that, directly from that drain. You know, if you want to change the Drain Commissioner's salary to $61,000 a year, I think that, first of all, I'd ask you to do it before the August primary. And second of all, I think that you ought to request that the present Drain Commissioner resign. You can always rehire him. You can ask for applicants because I think you're going to get a larger pool of applicants at 61 grand a year than you did at 7,000 a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, who's next? Hi.
Good evening. My name's Mike Detmer. I am a resident of Peninsula Township. I am the immediate past Chair of a Law and Policy, Great Lakes Law and Policy Water Center called FLOW, which has been fairly active. And I am here to advocate not for Steve Largent, but for this position. This position under the Drain Statute, the Drain Code of 1956, a 50-year-old legislative act, but under Section 280.21, Parent 8, allows this Board of Commissioners to change the name of the Commission to the Water Resources Commissioner. And it allows you to expand or coordinate the statutory mandates. I, I have to say in my ignorance, I don't know how these are split up with other county departments at the moment, but they can be consolidated. The Drain Code actually speaks to 28 Michigan statutes, 28 Michigan statutes that the Drain Commissioner interacts or oversees. It also talks to federal EPA statutes. I think, I, I'm speaking to the choir, I'm sure, that Grand Traverse County is the epicenter, the epicenter of clean water, freshwater in the Great Lakes. And it's our obligation and our responsibility to address those water, clean water issues. And the Drain Commissioner, just the name of it, sounds sort of bizarre to me. What, what does a Drain Commissioner do? But the statute says that can be a Water Commissioner, Water Resource Commissioner, that deals with a Madrid, or myriad of different freshwater issues. And, and I think, you know, I, I don't want to get into salaries and is the salary right or wrong. I think the Commission has an opportunity in this study session to step back and look at this in a longer term, look into the future, not into the 50 years of, of back history of what a Drain Commissioner did back in the 50s and the 60s. I, if I may give this to the assistant, I have certain handouts that I think explain I, our position, the statutes that, that it impacts the county through the Drain Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Who's next? Mr. Estes?
Thank you. My name's Michael Estes, 1023 Nakoma Drive. I'm a city resident. Mike Detmer actually summed it up perfectly. I feel he somewhat stole my thunder, but thanks, Mike. We really do need a water, water quality expert here. Call him a Drain Commissioner, call him whatever you want, but I think you have a rare opportunity to better define what that role should be in terms of the amount of hours, actually, or the pay. That's something totally up your discretion, but the county has to have someone that they can trust to make decisions about water quality, whether it's someone's backyard getting flooded out, whether it's a new development that's causing issues with the water system, or whether it's just maintaining the high quality of the water we have. If you were to poll the residents of this county and ask them what their most valuable resource is, they're not going to say streets or sidewalks, they're going to say water. And you really have no one on staff who is a quality individual who any of you can go to for expert advice. For the protection of the public, for protection of your citizens, I suggest you go to some type of full-time position and you count on someone who will be an expert. I would agree that currently you have an ideal candidate in that job. Down the road, there may be better candidates, I don't know, but for right now, you have a quality individual. You just need to make that a full-time position and make it an in-house expert for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Thank you. My name is Andy Thomas. I'm a renter at 3025 Cass from, uh, in the building with the, with Jeff Malkowitz. And I may have the dubious honor of being the most likely person to be flooded by lack of good drainage. I have 25 employees in three locations. Northport in Traverse City, we consider our hub, and up in Petoskey. We have a situation with the drainage right now that is almost yearly flooding our building. And it's not because we're in a flood zone, it's because of the backup of Miller Creek, which supposedly should drain into Boardman, but backs up and runs up north, gets behind our building and comes right into the building. I took this rental lease, I signed a lease with an agreement that if I have continual problems, I have an out. The previous renters, which was Grainger Constru-, Grainger Engineering, I guess it is, it's a nationwide company, they left because they couldn't control the flooding. An investment is what you need to make. You have a, I consider the most beautiful industrial corridor in northern Michigan right now is Cass Avenue. You have great truck access, you have great access to retail. I don't know how many times I've scoured the area looking for that kind of location, but I have good retail exposure and good industrial access to trucks and roads. We have a going concern, but just last October, I spent $18,000 and two months of my own labor and other help to remedy a flood. Fortunately, I had some insurance. But I can't do this every year. And the previous renter was asked to, you know, basically live with this situation. But under new ownership, we've been fighting to see that people like Steve get the kind of backing and the time, can, can invest the time needed to address the situation. You have two things. You have potential flooding, but you also have potential runoff, which can take pollutants into our water system. Both of those things are crucial. You've got industry and you have recreation. Let's, let's look at water as a priority. After all, it's the very first thing we need. Just come over here, I heard the radio, they just, pretty sure now they have a lake on the south pole of Mars. That's a big deal. Well, we got a lake right here, so let's protect it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Connie Sargent and I live out in the Village of Old Mission, 399 D. Swainy. And I'm here to tell you about the Village of Old Mission and also support Steve Largent. I think the Drain Commissioner is an unsung, unsung hero. It's an easy place to cut corners until there's a problem, and then the people and the township will regret that, cutting those hours. We have a water level crisis in Michigan right now in several places. You've read about it, heard about it. And four hours a week is inefficient and unfair to the person that does the job and to the people that live in this county. If the job is done correctly, it needs more hours. And I advocate for Steve. He has done a great job with communication and trying to get everything on board. If it's kept at the level now, nothing will get done. Four hours a week hardly gets one out to get a visit, you know, in places in the county. I know this personally because Steve has been out there at least 12 times and has been, I've been on the phone with him at least 12 times and have text also numerous times with him. I know he's make, has taken vacation time to make visits and be available by phone any time of the day, evening, or on a weekend. He's been efficient and respectful, but his hands have been tried, tied, trying to do the right thing and also with time constraints. And he's gone above and beyond, I know that, than the four hours a week. We had flooding in April out in the Village of Old Mission, and I continued to have water in my basement until the first week of June. It involved working in my basement 12 to 19 hours a day for 45 days. Many people have been affected in the village out there. We even had a meeting and there was a lot of people there. We've had water damage, septic failures, driveway damage, property damage, mold in their homes, running sumps these last few years where sumps have never been run before. And I believe a lot of this is due to the backup in the water of the ditch there and failure of good drainage. I know the water table is higher, I know that, but I personally feel about much, that much of our problem out there is due to lack of maintenance of the drain. At least 50 trees in a ditch that shouldn't even be there. We tested before we built a new house where the water table was in May of 2016. We knew it was at its highest in very many years, and we knew where it was, so we raised the house an additional two feet beyond the recommended amount. And during excavation of May of 2017, there was not one drop of water to be found, it was all sand. But there's a culvert that goes under Brinkman Road to Swainy Road and, and a resident out there said that there was broken tiles in that culvert. And I'm sure that impedes the flow of water, causes standing water across the street and backup of water to other people's property in that area. We te, we need routine maintenance of all drains. You need to do the right thing and be accountable to the people of this county. We have to prioritize and keep doing this. Am I supposed to stop or something?
You're okay, you can finish.
Okay, I'm just about done. We cannot let drain maintenance go without our attention for 21 years like it did out there, and that's wrong. It's a disservice to the people of the Old Mission and the people of, sorry, it's an emotional issue, and Grand Traverse County who pay penny of, plenty of taxes and who live here. I beg of you, um, do the right thing. And like an elderly woman in our community said, there's been plenty of talk, but not action. Please do it.
Thank you. Uh, Jay, I'll go with Jay. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Zollinger, 4232 Williamston Court, Acme Township Supervisor. I'm really here on behalf of our citizens. We have two drains in our township, Deepwater Point Drain and the Acme Village Drain. And I can tell you, if they're not maintained and not taken care of, two things happen. One is citizens have waters, demonstrated earlier by our previous presenter, but people start hooking their sump pumps to the sewer lines. So I also represent my sewer lines in the DPW. You don't maintain drains in a lot of places where there's sewers, people do things to, do what they have to, they think. And so I encourage you to do what's right. I don't know what the hours are, but I, I do support Steve and the need to do something better. We have a lot of drains in our county and we should take care of them and manage them well. Thank you for your time, appreciate your concern.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Andy Smits. I'm a licensed professional engineer, and I have provided public comment in a prior study session on the same subject, perhaps six or seven months ago. I'm here to provide comment again tonight in support of adequate funding for the Office of Drain Commission. Mr. Detmer made comment earlier about the number of citations of various other statutes within the Drain Code. A quick count by myself, earlier today, noted at least 12 different statutes outside of the Drain Code that place obligations or responsibilities, essentially unfunded mandates on the Office of the Drain Commission. And you should hear about something because they affect us all. First and foremost, Land Division Act, any new land that's subdivided has a requirement for the Drain Commissioner to act upon it. I have here and with the Chair's permission, I will hand to the clerk of the meeting, handouts which show the flow chart of a proposed land division plat and the requirements of various parties, including the Drain Commissioner, to, to act and to certify the plat. That includes review of the drainage within the plat and its discharge outside of the plat. Currently, there is a fee, I believe under ordinance, in Grand Traverse County of about $100 to $200 for that review process. That's woefully inadequate. If you expect a review for a plat for drainage to be done for that, you should expect drainage problems with every plat that you get approved, in my professional opinion. And I think it, it merits some weight. I basically, I passed the PE exam by doing open channel drainage problems. In addition to that, there's the Mobile Home Commission Act, which has obligations for the Drain Commission to act in approval of a preliminary set of plans. Failure to approve results in default approval. I'm not sure if you knew that, at 60 days, if an approval's not made, it is approved by default. I'm not sure that you want the default approval of mobile home parks in the county. I think that's unnecessary and perhaps imprudent when there's an office mandated to effect that review. In addition, the Condominium Act similarly has review requirements. These are all growth issues, these are all land division issues, land use issues that obligate the Drain Commissioner, and there's no funds in the Drain Code for that. So this isn't just about funding the office for the limited number of drains that this county has, it's about all the other obligations too. I don't know, as other commentators provided, I don't know the correct funding level. I think you should know what the correct funding level is, and I would encourage you as a taxpayer and a property owner in the county to make that study and set the appropriate level of funding, not just for the Drain Code, but for all the other obligations. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, in the hat.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Malkowitz, 1159 South Ridge Court, Blair Township. I am both a tenant and landlord at 3025 Cass Road. I am one of the co-owners of Great Lakes Malting Company. I believe you've all had a chance to review a letter that I previously submitted to this Board in addition to the Drain Commissioner and the Road Commissioner. One of the tenants in my building, Andy Thomas, did experience the same flooding event that we had in October of last year, when insufficient water retention along Cass Road resulted in our building becoming the epicenter of all the floodwater. If you recall, we had close to three inches of rain in less than 72 hours, and clearly our, our, our building could not handle that. I have close to almost a million dollars of equipment installed in the building that is not easily movable, so we're beholden to getting this problem fixed. That way we can continue to be a going concern. We also had an insurance claim in which I had to explain to the insurance company, how does your van flood when you're not located in a flood plain? So clearly something needs to be done. This issue has been known for a very long time, and I know some of you sitting here are successful business owners and you know just how the odds stack against you trying to start a new business. And so we just are asking for some support to do the right thing and solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman in the front.
Good evening. I'm Thomas Wertz, 3892 Forest Lakes Drive. I would like to echo the comments made by Mr. Detmer, Mr. Estes, that this is more than just a drain issue. Let's call it a waterways issue, okay? That kind of describes something broader and has a little bit of a ring to it. Without water, we're done. I've known Steve Largent for quite a few years. We first started working together when I was working with the Boardman Rivers Dam Committee as the chairman of the scoping team. And I've worked with him a lot since then. I'm on the board of the Conservation District, and so I've worked very closely with him. He is more than capable of doing this kind of job. He can do just about anything. There's one thing that he can't do, though. He just doesn't know how to work part-time. You ask him work part-time, you're going to get a full-time worker regardless of what, what it is. I think you'll all agree with that. I'll give you just a little anecdote. I was, one of our constituents a little while ago was canoeing down the river and said, told me, "Look, there's a tree down across the river, you know, is there anything you can do to take care of it?" And I said, "Well, I'll look into it." I called up Steve and I said, "There's a tree down somewhere." He said, "Whereabouts?" I said, "About a mile and a half down from Scheck's." He said, "I know that tree." We were waiting for it to go down, and I guess it all, you know, it, it finally happened. I'll send somebody out and we got it taken care of. That's the way he works. I think that this is much more than a, a part-time job here. I think that some years back, you scaled it back, but I don't think really that you were feeling as though that that was supposed to be a permanent, uh, solution here, that we were going to eventually bring this back to a full-time position. And I would certainly urge you to, to do that. Everybody else has made eloquent comments about how important this issue is, and so I'm in favor of Steve continuing with this, with this position and also making it eventually a full-time position as soon as possible. In closing, Mr. Herb Lemkool couldn't be here tonight because he's at a wedding in Wisconsin. The last time I talked to him, he said, "You're my proxy. Make sure that Steve gets a full-time job." I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman in the back in the red, and then we'll, trying to get to everybody.
Thank you. My name is Stu Kogi and I'm a resident on Bunker Hill Road here in Williamsburg. And I'm here, of course, on support of Steve Largent, you know, for the Drain Commissioner. And just real quick, I, I'm a professional wetland scientist. I've been working with county Drain Commissioners and Water Resource Commissioners for over 32 years. I used to be one of the DNR officers up here back in the 80s and 90s, back when Warren Verhaeghe was here, Marine Kennedy Templeton was here, worked with all the Drain Commissioners, issued the permit for Silver Lakes Outlet, also for Deepwater Point, so very familiar with what the office does. Guess I'm a little disappointed, having moved away, now I'm back up here again, to see where the office was back in the 80s, where Warren had a staff of, what, three, four people? And now we come back up and I see that it's only a one person, part-time, where Steve has four hours a week. Again, since I work with Drain Commissioners and Water Resource Commissioners throughout the whole state in my position, Steve, like, like the gentleman just said eloquently, Steve works full-time. It's a part-time position, but he's calling us multiple times on different projects throughout the week, way beyond what he's paid to do and really what this, this job deserves. Like I said, with all the Commissioners I work with throughout the state, there's not a single office has a Commissioner that only works four hours a week. Every one of them is either full-time or they're at 30 hours a week, plus they have a bunch of part-time staff to help. So I want to make that, hopefully that's something that's encouraged, like the gentleman said, that you look to reestablish this position back up to the level it deserves. Because again, when you look at Grand Traverse County, we know we are water resource driven, and that's what the Drain Commissioner does. They have a lot of power and a lot of authority because of their special, ability to have special assessment districts, to be waiver kind of levies or, or funds to be able to fix problems and situations. Again, it's something that I really want to take a look at, the documents that have been put out in support of that. So with that, I guess I'll, I'll leave it because I think everyone else has covered a lot of good things. But again, again, I'm here on support for Steve and especially for the office. And again, if you're looking to maybe have another person, I've known Steve since 1988 when he first took over the Boardman River stuff. And I said, when I look at the Drain Commissioner I work with, he's by far the most committed, understanding what's going on here, and I would fully support him. If you are looking for another Drain Commissioner beyond what you're doing, he would be your man. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman in the light blue?
Hello, my name is Tim Wenzloff, 6597 Deepwater Point in Williamsburg, Michigan, Acme Township. I'm a resident on the Deepwater Point Drain. I don't know much history about the drain. I understand that area flooded in the 80s and the county put in this nice drain, and I, I'm basically here because of the lack of maintenance in the drain, and I appreciate some help in getting that cleared out so I don't have a sad story to tell about my house flooding or lots of the other homes in the area flooding. But again, I'm in support of the Drain Commissioner position and hopefully that gets a little more support from the county. Thank you.
Thank you. We had a lady on the right here, and then the gentleman in the back after that.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is TJ Andrews. I live at 619 Webster Street. I'm here on behalf of the Watershed Center, Grand Traverse Bay. We're a nonprofit organization that advocates on behalf of water quality in the 1,000 square mile watershed that drains into our bay, which includes almost all of Grand Traverse County. Whenever we have rain events or snow melt in the spring, that runoff flows across service, surfaces and eventually makes its way into our bay, and drains are an important part of how that runoff cycles back into our water courses. When drains are well-designed and well-maintained and capture and treat and move that runoff, the quality of the water reaching the bay is improved. But if drains are not managed, if they're not maintained, if they're not designed to capture and treat the runoff from the drainage area, then the water that makes its way into surface waters, Mitchell Creek, Yuba Creek, the Boardman, carries with it all the sediment and pollutants that the runoff picked up along the way and deposits it into those waterways. Flooding is not- Flooding is not the only harm to the property along the way, but it also spreads nutrients, debris, bacterias, and sediment, which are all getting deposited in the streams, rivers, and lakes. It harms their ecosystems, and it impairs our water quality. Flooding also leads to erosion along riverbanks, it clogs rivers, and it harms our riparian habitat. The Watershed Center favors adequately funding the position of Drain Commissioner, because well-functioning drains are essential to preserving water quality. In order for drains to function, the county must treat the position of the Drain Commissioner as an essential function of county government. The current funding structure for the position treats the Drain Commissioner as effectively an afterthought. It's currently a semi-volunteer position, or it's one that's effectively being subsidized by other organizations in this community, or important obligations are not being met. Adequately funding this position would reflect that protecting water quality is a priority in this community. It's consistent with the recognition that our natural resources are a significant driver behind our economy. Our water resources are the reason people move here, and they come here to spend money. So for these reasons, we support the request to increase funding for the position of Drain Commissioner. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. The gentleman in the back by the door?
My name is Scott Ogden. I live at 5122 Silver Lake Shores in Traverse City. I am also the president, the current president, at the Silver Lake Improvement Association. I guess everybody's had a lot to say about Steve. I think Steve is a great person. We've worked with him on our overflow drain, trying to get things resolved as far as maintenance of the drain, so that it drains at a proper flow rate and we can get our water down. I've worked with Drain Commissioners before. I've never heard of a Drain Commissioner working part-time, but so I do hope you do consider, you know, bringing him up to a full-time. This is a big county, you have a lot of drains, you have a lot of fresh water, and it's a beautiful area to live in. But the reason I'm really here is I would like this Commission to consider setting up a Special Assessment District to help maintain our overflow drain on Silver Lake. Every spring, we have a terrible time getting the water back down to its high-water mark of, I can't remember what the amount is, but we were like six inches high. And we do have several properties that are close to the high-water mark, not to mention the drain fields. So in the springtime, we have oversaturated drain fields. We have houses that are in peril of having water in their homes. Many people have lost their beaches, and it takes probably about a month, month and a half, to get that water back down. The drain is moving so slow. So I know back in the eighties, there was a Special Assessment District put together to put that drain in. Nothing has been done since then. It is time, we're hoping that you will consider setting up a small Special Assessment for Silver Lake. It is a big fishbowl. The only way for water to get out of there is through that drain. And of course, in the springtime, we have, you know, a large watershed, so we do have quite a bit of water that does come in there. Last year, I think it was six inches high. And it takes, I don't know how long it takes to drain, because I don't know what the flow rate is, but to lose, to get an inch out of the lake, it's 2.4 million cubic feet to drop one inch, and we were six inches high last year. So you can see, Steve had told us that the only way they could drain that is they had to keep closing the drain. When they would reopen it, the weir on top of the drain would burp because it was so clogged. So we're looking at, you know, just at least getting the cover off and getting it clean. We're talking about possibly TV-ing that line to make sure there's nothing in the drain that is impeding the flow. Every year, we're fielding so many calls from people, you know, "What's going on? Is the drain even open?" And yes, it is. We know it is. We go up there, and we can hear it. So that's why I'm here, is just to ask you to consider setting up a Special Assessment. And I know Steve's working hard to put together an estimate on what that would be. Secondly, it is a public lake. We would hope that as part of that, that the state would take part in the Special Assessment to help defer some of the costs, so that it's not the complete burden of all the residents on the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, and good evening. Alan Strange, residence 1591 Case Court, Silver Lake. I've known Steve Largent for over thirty years. We've worked together for twenty years through the Conservation District. We've moved a lot of water together over the years. This spring, I got a call from Steve that we had an issue, high water in Silver Lake. We went down, assessed what was going on, and we started working getting water off the lake. Myself, I would go there every day on the way to my office. We have, I have an office and a business here in town also. Check the water level at the gauge. I would check the water level at the culvert, check the water levels at the drain itself, burp the drain, because we had issues with air building up in the drain, and the water wasn't going out the way it should. Did that for almost a month straight. It took me about twenty, twenty-five minutes every day, sometimes twice a day going down there, and Steve going down there also. Four hours a week is not good. It's a full-time position. He worked full-time. We finally got the drain somewhat working well. Basically, I went in there with a power washer and cleaned it, and that solved a lot of problems with the burping. We'd go in there and shut the drain down, clean all the contamination off the screen, and then reopen it and get the flow going again. And we did that, myself, again, I did that every day for probably a month and a half. And then, as we got the water level down, it was every other day. I would write everything down and send a report to Steve every morning. I'd send him a text. The Drain Commissioner is a full-time position. Like I said, I've worked with Steve through the Conservation District doing river restoration work. I am a retired corrections officer. I was a work crew leader, and I took a crew to the Conservation District, and my area was the Boardman River Watershed. We did a lot of restoration work on the Boardman River, along with other rivers in the area. He knows what he's doing. Again, it needs to be full-time. I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment? I think we got everybody in the room, didn't we? I think we did. Okay. So, yes, sir, it's your turn.
First off, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and expressing their concerns. There were a lot more people that also expressed their concern that could not make it this evening, but I appreciate it for taking the time, because this is an important topic, as you all know. I'd like to just, you know, for the record, introduce myself. My name is Steve Largent. I live at 5445 Charmin Road in Traverse City East Bay Township. I was born and raised here in Traverse City. After working ten years at the Peninsular Asphalt Construction Company, I went back to University of Montana and got my degree in wildlife biology with aquatic emphasis, and was lucky enough to bring it home here to put it to work. I've helped restore over three-hundred-and-fifty erosion sites on the Boardman River, and I started with the Grand Traverse Conservation District in ninety-two, and that's where I've been working for the last twenty-six and a half years. I am a completed MSU's Michigan Natural Shoreline Partnership Training, and I'm a certified professional in that. I graduated two thousand and nine graduate of MSU's Great Lakes Leadership Academy for Emerging Leaders Program, and I was recognized by NEMIEC, given the Clarence Crowe Award, and also the Frank Purvis Stewardship Award in two thousand and nine, the highest award given by Grand Traverse County Planning Commission. So that's just a little bit of my background, but I haven't done it alone. I've done it with many of the people that you see here in the community. So I'm gonna try to get, did I do something wrong?
Sarah is our technical support there.
Okay. The purpose of this presentation is to engage you folks in a meaningful dialogue as to the duties of Drain Commission. My goal here is to reestablish the position of County Drain Commissioner to a level that effectively and legally serves the people of Grand Traverse County. County Drain Commissioners are stewards of our most important natural resources. As you've heard from many people here, water. And Drain Commissioners strive to balance the need between proper drainage with water quality and natural resource management in a cost-effective manner resulting in public health benefits. And so that's kind of an overview. General job description, I oversee and execute the duties of County Drain Commissioner, which you've heard from some folks here, is, you know, there's a lot that's required, and according, you know, mandated by state statute, but it's an unfunded mandate. Some of these responsibilities include responsible for all aspects of financial administration, including but not limited to annual budget preparation, bid procurement, contract development, purchase agreements, purchase orders, invoice approval, and budget tracking. I also respond to public inquiries regarding flooding issues.
Steve, I've got a question, and I've got a few questions as we go.
Sure, no problem, no problem.
And with the responsibilities with the bid procurement, contract development, those are for when you're actually like putting a drain district together, or is that for when you're assessing?
According, no, according to, I have to follow county purchase policy, and so any time I hire, let's say, Elmers to come out, and it's over, what, five, I think it's up to five thousand dollars, is that correct, Chris? According to county purchase policy?
Yeah.
I know that's just changed. And so anything that I do, you know, like if whoever I hired to go out to do maintenance on the old Mission Drain, because we're gonna have to get that done, you know, like next month, we're gonna have to do some short-term maintenance.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Also, Drain Commissioner provides drain petition and other pertinent information upon request. We get that quite often, but at this level of support, there's no way I can assist those. Some of you have heard Joe Gorka from out on Bluff Road. That is a true need for a drainage district in that area. But really, there's, you know, if they were to petition me, I would have a hard time following up on that petition, but I would be, you know, legally required to do that and hold days of review. And so develop and administer and supervise drain maintenance programs? We don't have a drain maintenance program, and we need to develop a drain maintenance program. Utilizes sound public relation skills, answers questions from the general public, press, engineers, and developers concerning drainage. Attends meetings of varying nature, which may include developing agendas, taking minutes, records, and design decisions. Prepares necessary documents, including petitions, right-ofways, and property easements. Negotiates acquisition of property easements, purchase agreements, and other agreements. Oversees design work connected to the drain projects. This may include survey work, GIS data, contract specifications, bid documents, and general project oversight. Also responsible for all aspects of record-keeping, as mandated by state law. Review engineering plans, designs, drawings, and specifications submitted by contractors, consultants for Platts, planned unit developments, condominium projects, and mobile home projects as mandated by law.
I'd like to...
Yes?
When I, I'm not an expert, but when I study drainage, I don't believe that planned unit development and condominium projects are part or mandated in the Drain Code.
There is, I know that, where is, Andy left. He knows that more than I do. I know I get sent condominium notices, you know, all the time by attorneys as Drain Commissioner.
What doesn't matter about that, what matters is that, is it really part of the drain?
Yeah, I believe, yes, that review.
Is it?
Yeah, yes, it is. Yes. Yes, he works, he's done it for thirty-two years, and I can get you that, have Stacy Hesong from Feige Schultz, you know, give you a call if you would like.
Okay.
And I know for a fact that Mobile Home...
Well, I don't, I'm not a Mobile Home...
Yeah, I know that for a fact, because we just had one submitted for Blair Township, and that has to be reviewed.
Yeah, I agree on that.
Investigates reviews and approves denies all requests for modification to previously-approved projects that involve drain easements. I've got two of those right now, where the, one up on what's called Hidden Ridge, where they want to put in an underground storage for the stormwater, because, one, they don't like the standing water in their front yard, and, two, it's a dangerous situation for that property, so, but they have to go through, since the Drain Office approved, previously approved that drainage system, any modifications to that also has to go through the Drain Commission to be approved.
But this would not include private drain easements, only illegally-established public drain, right?
The condominiums, the drains that were approved, such as Hidden Ridge, they had to be approved by the Drain Commissioner through a letter from the Drain Commissioner. They had to review it and approve that drainage system.
But currently, if there's a private drain easement, you wouldn't manage that, right?
If the Drain Commission was involved in the approval, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So prepares a necessary, oops, wrong way. Investigates drainage complaints, inspects condition of open-channel drains and lake-level districts. Responsible for all aspects of administering Special Assessment Districts, including changes to the district boundaries, preparation of Special Assessment roles, conducting day of reviews for public input, benefit factor determination, benefit percent, which is apportionment, and fourteen A calculations. Grant writing and administration. Here, we were able to get a $200,000 grant, not grant, but equip funds, environmental quality incentive program funding. I was able to get that for the Cass Road Railroad Crossing, to help keep that cost of that to those folks in that Cass Road drain, to help, you know, offset some of their costs. And so I was able to write that and get that. I started that before I was Drain Commissioner, but that's the kind of assistance that's available out there. Testify in court as necessary, as an expert witness, professionally trained and to stay current on changes in state and local policies regarding drains, certifications, permits, environmental codes, and regulations. Responsible for producing an annual report, according to state law. Responsible for maintaining regular office hours, as Christine Maxbow said, and the list goes on.
Did we get a report this year?
No. We did not get a report this year. There hasn't been for two years, no. Or three years, actually.
For three years?
I think the last one was two thousand and thirteen.
No, there's a report two thousand and...
Two thousand and fourteen.
I think we received one in...
Fourteen.
Well, I've received two that I've been here.
Yeah, so, but I know there wasn't one the year when I, before I came into office, and there's just other priorities when you have limited time, and the people are the priority. Special Assessment Districts, there's at least five that are necessary at this time. The previous Drain Commissioner did not conduct a single Special Assessment District.
Dean? Go ahead.
Was there a special assessment done on the Silver Lake?
No.
Drain District, never?
Oh, there was when it was first set up. Yes, there was one that was when it first set up to install the drainage structure, and there was some funds in there for maintenance. Yes, all of these had Special Assessment Districts established when they were first set up.
I have a document here that...
Chris, is this anything that...
While they're reading that, do you have any say over sewers?
No, that's, no.
Even if it's like a new development, you have to...
That's Department of Public... That's Department of Public Works.
Okay.
One of the things that affects these drains is stormwater runoff.
Yes.
And, you know, with the restructuring of the Drain Commissioner's office a few years ago, stormwater was no longer the responsibility of the Drain Commissioner. Do you wanna speak to that change?
It still is in some townships, and also on previously, again, previously-approved Platts. And it's something that I need to understand better as to what my total responsibilities are when it comes to, you know, the stormwater review. One area, though, that is not, you know, necessarily mandated, but is a service, is when one property drains their water onto another property without any, you know, drainage easement. And that happened there in Long Lake Township, where one property owner just ran his roofwater right over on to the other property, and...
I know one with an eight-inch PVC pipe running onto the adjacent property.
Yeah, yeah, and that's not legal, and so, I get those kind of calls. There's no other place for those folks to go, you know, for advice. And the only thing is that, you know, the only recourse they have is suing their neighbor, and I try to help them work out something that is less than that, obviously. There's five necessary at these times, these include the Cass Road Drain. As you know, we're in the middle of working on that one right now, that's a $3.75 million, estimated million-dollar project, with a $475,000 drain note due in December. This one's been going on for way too long, it needs to get done, as Andy and Jeff said. Duck Lake Dam, this is one that is real close to being ready to go. We need, I need to get estimates for the maintenance of that dam, and then we also need to do, as you can see, get estimates to repair this bank downstream of the dam on private property, and then get that repaired for those folks. This is a vacation rental by owner, and they are very concerned about this erosion that's going on right here in the Duck Lake Dam. As you can see, the boards are, you know, are leaking, and there's just a lot of work that needs to be done there on the dam itself.
Steve?
Yes.
Regarding the Duck Lake?
Yes, sir.
Special Assessment, I've got a document that I found online today that, it's a memorandum to all property owners and persons in that assessment area for $31,337.75. And it's dated April 20th, 2016. Do you know if that'd been followed through with since you've been here, or was anything, it was, says here it was provided to the residents?
It was...
Never taken to point of assessing them?
We went to the court, they approved the special assessment district. Chris, you wanna help me out on this one?
Where we're at with that is, our last fall judge power entered an order approving the special assessment district boundaries. We've got, we've got the boundaries figured out, what the special assessment district will look at. We now need to hopefully sometime in the early fall, take the necessary steps to set the role for the special assessment district. What you're looking at, Mr. Claus, was done before the lake level was set, and it was done to give property owners notice that these are the plans, this is what we'd like to do with Duck Lake, so that is a preliminary...
Yes.
...estimate of what it will cost to do the necessary repairs there.
At that time.
Okay.
If I recall, one of the issues with the Duck Lake Special Assessment District is when it was initially done, way back whenever it was...
1959.
I was gonna say 1960, so I was close, but the fact was, is that the only people that were on the roll were those people who had immediate lakefront frontage. So, like Duck Lake Peninsula, all of the people in the interior portion of the peninsula who have shared access and different things to the water, were not, never assessed anything, only those people that had lakefrontage, per se. And then, as those lots were split and sold and transferred, it was never, it was never followed up on to expand that, expand that special assessment district.
We do have different tiers, we have, you know, tier one, tier two, and tier three now.
But that, but that was done in late 2016 or 2017?
Yes, and then approved.
This refers to tier one and tier three.
And then approved. And this 639 revolving drain fund owes the general fund, you know, over $20,000, which was, so, that has to happen, you know. Silver Lake Drain, as you've heard, you know, it needs, it needs maintenance, we need to be able to get that screen off there, that stainless steel screen, see what's happening, you know, in that six-foot diameter, you know, outlet structure. And then, we also need to look at Cox's Pond Outlet, and the boards there are rotting away. And then, as you know, Dan, that, the screening around the drain itself needs to be looked at, we need to put gravel down, and so there's quite a bit of work, we need to jet out the equalizing culvert between the lake and the marsh where the outlet structure is located, and we did that once, and, but there's no money left in that account for, you know, to do any maintenance.
Steve, one gentleman spoke, Scott, I believe, said that he would like to see a special assessment there, but isn't there, I mean, I don't understand how special assessments are put together, there's already a drain district for that, or a district for that lake level?
Boundary, correct, but there's been several splits, what you have to do is you have to go back, and Chapter 197 of the Drain Code allows is you to go back and look at your drainage district boundary, which an engineer has to do, but then you, you look and make sure you confirm that that boundary is still accurate, but then you look at how many splits have occurred within, you know, since the last time you've done your assessment, because then you have to change your apportionment, you have to change your percentage, and then you have to have a day of review for the public to come in and, you know, and either challenge their apportionment, and, but you have to, if, no matter what, if you change one person's apportionment, one property owner's apportionment, you have to adjust somewhere else, because it has to equal 100%.
And that is, is that just a one-time deal? Do you have to, like, go through the bidding process to see what the funds needed are gonna be, or is it something that you assess, and it goes into a fund, and you just keep drawing that down with...
You want to, yeah, you wanna look at what needs to be done immediately for maintenance purposes. Then, you know, to get the drain operating the way it needs to drain, so that it, the water level drops in the lake in the spring as quickly as possible, because even an extra week, you know, or a few days, might mean an extra week or a few days of waves lapping up and roding, you know, somebody's property, or, you know, brick wall, or what have you. But, so what we would look at, and we put a maintenance plan together, and that's what I talked about earlier, there's no maintenance plan for any of these drains, there's no schedule. So if I, the next person that comes into this office, I can hand them a schedule that says, here's what's been done, and here's what needs to be done when. And that was not handed, you know, done for me, I don't know if it was done for the previous Drain Commissioner, but I can't find any maintenance schedule in the file, and we need to have that, you know, we need to be serving these people in these drainage districts, so that they know what to expect, so that they have the proper drainage, and they know what to expect from a, you know, finance-wise.
Right, and they, and they need to be assessed for that, so that they can be taken care of.
Exactly, and you're exactly right, then you look maybe 10, 15 years down the road of maintenance, so let's say every three years you do such-and-such, you know, which is at an estimated cost of three grand, and every five years you do, you know, do something different, which may have an estimated cost of 10 grand, you know, whatever, you get to that, you know, 15-year point, you have an estimate, and then you draw those funds down accordingly, and do that maintenance accordingly.
And with a lake, with a lake level, a drain, is it, is it $5,000 a mile, that you can just have work done on without...
A year, yeah, $5,000 a year.
Yes.
Yep.
How does that work on a lake for lakefrontage? I mean, is it the lakefrontage that you can, that you go on, or how's the...
I think it's 5,000, do you know how that works, Stu? Is it $5,000 per drainage structure?
I believe so.
Yeah, it's not, you know, necessary. So, if it's under a mile, it's, it's the drainage structure itself, it's not necessarily, you know, so if you've got a mile-long drainage ditch, it would be, you know, $5,000.
So, so if when Silver Lake, if when you get the assessments done, and they have money in there, you could actually have...
Routine.
Elmers go there and keep it clean.
Exactly.
And not have to go there yourself, because the Drain Commissioner's job isn't really supposed to be, or needs to be boots on the ground. I mean, somebody in a wheelchair should be able to do your job, and you're trying to set it up so that there's scheduled maintenance that is gonna be done at some point.
That's where you have to, you have to look at, you know, what makes sense to those people in that drainage district, because if I hire an Elmers to come in, or I hire an engineer to come in at $250 an hour to clean that screen, when I can do it for, you know, a fraction of that, you know, then those people, their maintenance money goes further, and it needs to be set up so that it doesn't, you know, require, you know, everyday maintenance. But you still have to administer those, you know, the bids and administer those contractors, you know, and so, you're exactly right, yes, for the heavier stuff, but for, you know, routine maintenance, or not routine maintenance, but if you see something that needs to be done, yes, I'm gonna put my, you know, waiters on, get out and get it on.
Right, but you don't, it's more of a courtesy that you're doing for, for the people.
Yeah, I mean, it costs them a whole lot more if somebody else came in.
Correct, I understand that, thank you.
Is that cost recouped from that fund? Or do you just eat the cost to say, well, I just went and did it, and it doesn't come out of that fund?
You're right, if I do it, it does not come out of that fund, you know, if I hire, you know, a contractor to come in, then it does come out of that fund.
If you did a lot of work, and I understand your logic for it, but if you did a lot of work, then your assumptions of what it costs to actually maintain it are not accurate either. And it may not be, you know, a whole lot of money, but it just, it's not gonna be as accurate.
But it is all, it's all your time, which is what we're here talking about tonight.
Yes. But yes, you have to also oversee those contractors and make sure they're doing the work that they need to be doing.
Right.
Old Mission Drain, move on to Old Mission. As you know, this has been a problem this spring, there was trees growing in the middle of that drainage ditch, like Ms. Sergeant said, that, who knows how many, 50-plus, but a lot of them were, you know, six inches in diameter, Dan, you saw those out there, and, and there was also, you know, other issues, but that drain needs to be maintained, both on the short-term and then a long-term basis. We have a, there's only 1,500 bucks left for that, so I'll be getting to something here in a minute about that. And then, Deepwater Point Drain here, Chris was here to talk to you about that, there's only about 6,000 left in that account to do any work, and there's a whole lot more work that needs to be done there than $6,000, you know, to get that back properly. So what we're looking at is we need to advance money for the short-term maintenance, before we can get these special assessment districts done, I'm suggesting Silver Lake Drain 10,000, and Old Mission Drain 10,000. Deepwater Point Drain, at this point, I haven't been able to get out and, you know, and assess that, but if there's something that needs to be done sooner or later, we may need some money advanced for Old Mission Drain, just to make sure that we get that, yeah.
What all does that short-term maintenance include?
Again, it would be going back out and dredging out the, for Old Mission, let's say, it'd be cutting the trees out of the ditch, it would be dredging it down to its original elevation, the ditch elevation, and then also cleaning out the culverts, you know, because those culverts, a lot of them are full of, you know, not full, but have, you know, sediment in, which reduces the capacity of past water storm flows. And then also, we noticed in one area at the Old Mission Drain, where it needs, the bank needs to be built up, because that's where it breached and headed to the, I guess it would be to the, what direction would be, Abbeconny, to south, yeah, and to Dan's, and that needed to be, that section of the drain, of the ditch, needs to be built up, so that doesn't breach in that location. But there's long-term work that needs to be done, and this would only be a short-term fix. We have a Saw Grant that the previous Drain Commissioner did get, and he did not expend any funds, and I was able to get a three-year extension on that from the DEQ, but by resolution, this board is, and the county is on the hook for any money that is spent out of that Saw Grant, if the grant, or if the, you know, the asset management plan is not completed to their, to their, to their standards. And so, I was happy to get that three-year extension, but I'm not gonna go out and start spending money hiring, you know, contractors, unless I can be sure that we're gonna be able to finish that asset management plan accordingly.
The $10,000, the monies that you're talking about that need to, for the immediate tune-up of these drains, you'll be coming to the board and asking for an advance from us?
Correct, and how would that work, Dean?
I would ask or request that that be part of the special assessment that would be created, because that work, I mean, if you advance the money, that's, it's an accounting term, but it's an expense of the drain districts, and the general fund would, I mean, you could, you could outright appropriate the money where the general fund would have expenditure, but that's not how it's been done.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, yeah. But then it would get, then it would get reimbursed from the specialist?
From the special assessment that's ultimately, you know, levied and collected.
Yeah, exactly.
Cool.
And so, just allow us to get the work done sooner than later.
Right, right, and then, yeah, then you get, these special assessments are underway, so that that happens.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, I think, you know, and I've spent a little time with this over a long time, you know, little bits and pieces, I think the, you know, the assessment that I have is the fact that we have 13 drains throughout the county, none of them truly have a drain maintenance plan in place for them, you know, and we can go back two or three or four different Drain Commissioners before Steve, and those drains were established, but there was no maintenance plan set in place for them. So I think, I think what I see is that, you know, the primary objective here is to come out with a decision to develop maintenance plans for these drains. I believe that part of that maintenance plan will be the reenactment and the reevaluation of the special assessment districts on each of those drains. Okay, so, costs incurred for the establishment of that maintenance plan, and the development of that maintenance plan and doing the work, I believe can be assessed back to that special assessment district for each of those drains.
Yes.
The problem, the problem is, what do we do to get from where we are today to where we will be when we get the maintenance plans in place, and are actually have the drains collected, repaired? You know, this isn't gonna happen in six months, it's not gonna happen in a year, it's probably not gonna happen in a couple of years.
It better happen in two years.
We have, we have some significant issues that need to be addressed, but I think the big, the key point, at least in my opinion, is the cost for the maintenance of these drains should be borne by the, borne by the special assessment districts that are served by those drains.
This is where the Saw Grant that is on your screen right now, that will provide a, you know, maintenance plan for each one of these drains, exactly what you say, and that is such a, you know, what is needed right now, you know, that is needed to get this done, you know.
I don't, I don't remember what the dollar amount for the Saw Grant was, off the top of my head, but, but the point is, we cannot, you know, whether it's 10,000 or 20,000, do you remember what it is, Steve? The Saw Grant was...
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven thousand dollars? Okay, do you believe that we can develop a maintenance plan for each of the... Do you believe that we can develop a maintenance plan for each of these drains for seventy-seven thousand dollars?
That's what was proposed and that's what we'll, we'll do.
You know, the, the point is who's responsible to provide, to develop that maintenance plan? Is that something you're going to try to do yourself or is it something that's going to be contracted?
Contracted. But I have to oversee that contract.
I understand that, Mark.
Yes.
I want to make sure that we can use that Saw Grant. I know there's constraints on how you use the money. Are you confident we can use the Saw Grant to develop these maintenance plans?
That's what it's specifically, yep, that's what it's specifically for.
Very cool, thank you.
The only two that they backed out, because it was for like a hundred thousand dollars, they backed out the two lake-level districts. So they backed out Duck Lake and Silver Lake because they.
But, but the, but the grain, the drains that we have significant issues with, Old Mission and Cass Road, you know, are ongoing on a very regular basis now. You know, so we should be prioritizing the development of maintenance plans for those drains. You know, but that being said, just because we have the maintenance plan doesn't mean we have the money to do the maintenance either.
Exactly. And that's where the special assessment district comes in.
That's where the special assessment district comes in. So, you know, the problem is how we get from where we are today to where we have the drainage plans, we have the specialist district, assessment district set up to pay for the maintenance. You know, we're, we're, we've got a time lapse in here. And the problem is we're going to have to find a way to come up with some upfront money to, to even start moving this forward. You know, even, even the development of the, the maintenance plans is going to take time. That can be paid for with the Saw Grant. But the fact is the Saw Grant nor Steve's current budget can pay to fix, to clean the culverts on Cass Road that's causing part of the problem. You know, and, and I, I'm just trying to figure out how we come up with a way. There, there will be a point when those special assessment districts are enacted that the county can be reimbursed for the expenditures that are, at least in my, my opinion, and Chris is going to tell me if I'm wrong. In my opinion, the, the money that we spend upfront to administer and develop those special assessment districts can be charged back to those assessment districts.
The money associated with engineering costs, legal costs, setting the rule, all that can be charged back to the people in the special assessment.
So, so the, so the key piece is how we get from where we are today until those, those special assessment districts are in place and the, and the development, the maintenance plans are developed. You know, I, I think what we need to do is, is make some sort of a commitment to move forward as, as quickly as possible to contract someone to develop the maintenance plans. You know, and, and.
Send out the RFPs.
Set up the RFPs and put that out. You know, obviously in four hours a week, eight hours a week or whatever, Steve cannot develop even the RFPs to send that out for that. So we need to try to evaluate that. But, but the bottom line is most of the costs that we're talking about will be incurred on the people in those drainage districts eventually. It's the problem of how we get from here to there.
Bob, did you have a comment?
Yeah. Can any of the commissioner's time that's spent on any of these districts be recouped from the special assessments? Or is that just too much of a nightmare for the county?
The, the short answer is probably no.
Okay.
I, I don't think.
Dean would love it. I can see that smile on his, he doesn't smile often in these meetings.
I don't want to do anything that's not appropriate.
Oh, I know.
But the, but the point is if we, if we contract someone to develop the maintenance plan, you know, that, that, that cost will be re-incurd on the, on the special assessment.
And that's the duties of the Drain Commissioner.
The Saw Grant, I mean, your Saw Grant is a grant, so that's not something that we would pass on to the.
We can pass on the match. You know, the match requirement, we can divvy out to the, you know, the eleven drains that are involved. So that, I mean, it's only like a eight thousand dollar match requirement, but that can be, you know, assessed to those districts.
But also, and I guess to me at some point, we got to look at how many years, and I don't want to use the term mismanagement, but just lack of proper oversight, of lack of maintenance and lack of a maintenance plan. You know, at some point you think, well, maybe the county owns some of this too, you know.
A six-inch tree didn't grow in a drainage district in the, in the matter of the last couple of years. You know, we, we have to acknowledge that. You know, and, and the thing is I'm not familiar with all of these drains. I'm, I'm very familiar with the one in Gilbert Park. You know, it, it's in one of my very dear friend's backyard. It comes, as pipe comes across the road and dumps out on, into the lake in the, in Gilbert Park and next to the boat launch. But in all honesty, it's about as simple as it could ever get.
But we got to make sure.
You know, the only thing, the only thing you got to do is make sure that, that, that catch basin that's in the, in the swamp area behind those houses that are Buchanan subdivision doesn't plug up. But other than that, it, there's not going to be a whole lot of maintenance on that drain for the next hundred years. But, you know, some of these are more complicated than that, you know. So they're not all the same. We're going to have some that are very, very easy to deal with, but we're going to have like the Old Mission Drain and the Cass Road drain that are much more complicated.
And Deepwater Point, you know, and.
Sonny, do you, you've been sitting on this board. Other than the last couple of years, when's the last time you had conversation about a county drain?
Very, very rarely. Very, very rarely, you know, and, you know, I, I guess, you know, somewhere along the way we'll, we'll have a discussion and maybe, maybe this is the place to have it. When the Drain Commissioner's salary was reduced. Four years ago, six years ago? I don't even know now. You know, at that time, there was, there was no activity, if you will, of, of anything being done with any of the drains. There was no, there was no proposals to have plans to do anything with the drains.
Yeah, if you look at the hours that were in that report.
You know, there was, there was, there was, there was nothing happening. And, you know, of course, construction was down and all of those other things were down. And there was really nothing that the Drain Commissioner was doing. And it was deemed that, you know, he was getting paid a lot of money and was not truly producing product per se for the, for the citizens of the community. So at that point, the decision was made to reduce the salary prior to the election of that, that election cycle. You know, well, we've now went two election cycles past that and here we are. We have, we have a number of county drains that have now been identified. Now, I'm not going to say that they shouldn't have been identified previously because I think that's the situation that we have is that they weren't, they weren't previously identified as being a problem and no one was coming to us and talking to us about needing to do something with them. You know, I, you know, we've had, we've had a few discussions about the Duck Lake Dam a few times and former Commissioner Dick Thomas was the person that handled putting the boards in in the spring and taking them out in the fall, or taking them out in the spring and putting them in in the fall. You know, he, he was the person in charge of doing that.
It's not as simple.
Well, but, you know, if, if you talk to Dick, he'll tell you how, 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 how simple it was. You know, I've had a lot of discussions with him about how he, he, he assessed when it was time to move boards in the Duck Lake Dam. But the, but the point is, is that there was never an identification of need on the county drains until what we've heard basically in the last six months to a year.
Were you, were you on the board when the Silver Lake Drain went in?
No.
Okay. When, when did that?
Silver Lake was done in nineteen eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, okay.
And even though I've been here a long time, I didn't come here to tell.
I was going to come in, that's the first time I've heard you say, no, I wasn't here at the time, so.
I remember going in, but.
I, I was on the Long Lake Township Board when that went in, but I wasn't here.
Marine Templeton put in that drain.
I mean, I, I know you're continuing, but I mean, I'd completely agree with Sonny that we, we got to do something here. I mean, we.
Yeah, you might be right.
Nineteen eighty-seven, I wouldn't doubt Warren Verhage would.
Yeah, it was Warren, yep. Warren and Marine was deputy.
Yep.
Can we just back up for a second, back to Cass Road? How does the reconstruction of Cass Road by the Road Commission affect all the other work that needs to be done there?
Well, they're, they're obviously a, a strong partner in this one and what they're going to be doing is we're going to be putting in a third lane and under that third lane, that turn lane is going to be a drain pipe. And the, one of the things that, they're going to be doing that at a hundred percent of their own cost. You know, they're, they're covering that cost. And we, we cover the cost of putting the pipe in, you know, and. But when I became, you know, Drain Commissioner, that was one of the first things I asked is where's the outlet into Miller Creek? Because, you know, it just, you know, Stu was working with me on this one and it was just like, you're taking warm water from these basins and putting them into a cold water trout stream. And so the first thing we did is looked at and I asked, I said, is there an alternative? And so now we're, we've identified an alternative outlet that puts it onto Garfield Township Parkland property into a wetland where it can filter, cool, then enter Miller Creek and then, you know, the Boardman River. You know, so there's a lot of things, you know, like that, that.
Wasn't the Cass Road reconstruction going to start this year?
It's going to start when we, we start the project, as far as that third lane from South Airport Road South to about Britton Banner. Yep. And that's going to be my number one, you know, priority, just simply because, you know, we've got this ticking time clock, yeah.
Who is the engineering company you're using for the Cass Road drain at this point?
It's the one that has been there for the entire duration, Spicer Group.
Again?
Spicer.
Spicer, okay. And I know a lot of work went into that before you got there and in fact, you were involved with it.
As far as the road crossing, the road string crossings.
How close are we to having a fix on that?
Bids are going to be going out in hopefully December. They were supposed to go out about a year ago, but again, just the lack of being able to spend it as much time as I need to spend on this. And also, but it, it keeps getting delayed. But our, our, our firm date is December. And we were a little bit concerned because we were going to go out for bids in like July, you know, the way we, the old schedule. We, you know, just, we would have gotten ridiculous bids because, you know, everybody's so busy right now. So December will get much better pricing.
Does Spicer, are they the ones that actually send out for bids, the engineering firm? You, you don't actually do that, do you?
No, we can pay, we, we have them do that, but I have to oversee all the contracts and.
Right, so, so they can, so that cost gets reimbursed, that goes to the drain.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, I think, I think it's, it's pretty obvious. What's going to happen here is once these drains are taken care of and there's a maintenance plan, the costs incurred to maintain those drains and to fix them will be incurred by the special assessment district. It's, it's how we get from here to there. You know, and, you know, whether, whether we try to figure out a way, you know, to, you know, change Steve's salary as Drain Commissioner, whether we can figure out a way to say, okay, we're, we're going to take each of these drains that we're dealing with and we're going to assess an administrative cost to those, which can go to the special assessment district and forward that. You know, I always, I always am concerned about changing the salary of an elected official in the middle of a term and even more concerned about changing it in the middle of this budget year. You know, so I, I don't know how, how we go about fixing this. But, but, but the, but the problem is, is we have to figure out how to get from where we are today to when we have those drain plans and we have the special assessment districts in place. And I've been involved in doing a few special assessment districts over the years. That doesn't happen overnight either. You know, it's, it's very, very time-consuming and, you know, the whole designing the, the, the tax role and who should pay what proportion, you know, and, you know, we, we used to do them based on, on derived benefit, but they don't allow us to do that anymore. You know, we used to be able to do, we used to be able to do, and, you know, when I was at the township, we could do private roads and such and we would do them. All right, everyone on the road divided by the, take the total number, divide it by, by the, by the thing and say, okay, each person drives two hundred and seventy-four dollars a year's worth of benefit for the next five years and that's the way we did it. But now it all has to be based on per lineal foot and you have to document the, the benefit from each, of each of those fees.
And that has to be decided by, that has to be.
Decided by.
By the Drain Commissioner. That, so.
Okay. Go ahead.
No, that's, that has to be, you know, so. Continue on, you know, like I said, that's, you know, plan and site review I have. I just got another one on my desk today, you know. White Pine Site Condo in Whitewater, or in, you know, Whitewater Township. It was a previously approved plat that was not developed because of the downturn in the economy. Now they want to add seven additional lots to this. And so we're going to have to, you know, have that reassessed from a, because that's more impervious surface. You know, it does the, the existing, because they put in the, the drainage structures, which was approved by the Drain Commissioner, according to a certain number of property, a certain number of lots. And then they, for economic reasons, split off seven more from those lots. And so how does that, are the, are the basins adequate now? You know, that has to be determined. And so those are the kinds of things that we don't see that, that take up a heck of a lot of time.
So, so Steve, on like those reviews, is that something that you personally have to do or is it something that you can have a firm, an engineering firm do and then pass that on to the, because the, the developer should incur the cost of that?
That's right where we're headed. Fee structure. And we need to revisit the fee structure. It was set at a hundred bucks in nineteen seventy-nine. I think that was doubled in two thousand nine, twenty years later. But it's only two hundred dollars. And there you can see, you know, that it's tucked down, second paragraph from the bottom. Anyway, it's only two hundred dollars in our existing fee structure.
Right. And, but this, this is, this is a fee structure. I mean, this isn't even the fee structure that we just approved for soil erosion.
But that's also, you know, the office of Grand Travis County Drain Commission fees, you can see that on the.
Right, right.
And so what I would be proposing is something, you can hardly see this, but basically, you know, we'd be looking at, you know, and this is again, just draft, but something, you know, I, you know, worked with some engineering firms to say, okay, what do other engineering, or what do other, you know, counties do? Preliminary plat or site plan review, two fifty, engineered stormwater review, a thousand dollars. You know, this is just an example. There's a lot of examples that we can go from to recoup those funds, to recoup those, you know, that, you know, time for, you know, plat reviews.
But I think the, the key point with that is, is the fact that that review is statutorily the responsibility of the Drain Commissioner.
Exactly.
And the, the fee structure that is in place right now for those plat reviews that he is legally responsible to do does not adequately compensate for the time that's involved in doing it.
I want to go back to this Whitewater Pine Site Condo. I'm wondering about this. This is a private development, right? And I always thought there was no mandatory review of site condo projects. Why isn't this being handled by the township engineer?
Subdivision plat.
My question, why isn't this being handled by the township engineer?
This was previously approved by the Drain Commissioner, by Kevin.
So that, if it's previously approved by the Drain Commissioner, even though we're not doing these things now?
Yeah, I think we, that I'll get a, a opinion from the, but yes, if they were previously approved, the, the drain is under the authority of the Drain Commission to make sure, and once you approve it, it's under the authority of the Drain Commission to, to make sure that those.
But in the future, you wouldn't be responsible?
I'll have to double-check on that to see the status of that. But I, I know for previously approved ones, yes. Chris, do you know anything?
If someone came up in, in the future, a private individual and asked you to do a stormwater thing, that wouldn't be you.
It depends. I, I wouldn't do the review, but it depends if this office is mandated by state law to, to do that plat review and I will get that information to you. Oh, yeah. Yeah, these, so I got attorney and consultant back there that say, yes, I am required. Thank you. I don't want to get in trouble. So I know, you know, so.
Back to the, back to the review.
Yes, sir.
What, I don't know if this can worms up or not. What, what qualifies you to review those? Do you get some training or, I mean, to me, I'm thinking if you don't have any training, since it's a elected position, anybody could run.
That's where this fee structure.
Wouldn't it be better to have an engineering firm review that kind of?
That's where this fee structure comes in. That's what this does pay for is to, I bring it in, you know, I review it, make sure that something, if it's something simple, you know, obviously. something, if it's something simple, you know, obviously, you know, common sense is common sense, you know? You don't have to go to an engineer for something that's, that's simple. But if it's something that's more complex, like what, you know, that hidden, or like that Whitewater, um, condo project is, as far as, um, you're now increasing the amount of impervious surface, uh, and you have certain basin sizes, yes, we go to an engineering firm, that's what this fee structure will increase in this fee structure, proposed fee structure will cover. But I still have to administer that.
Right, but you have the total liability then for that.
Yeah, exactly. But I've got their stamp to hide behind, yeah.
Why'd you want that job?
So again, you know, this request is not about an individual, it's about the position of county drain commissioner, it's about serving the people of Grand Travis County the way they deserve to be served. Uh, the lack of maintenance in these county drains has contributed in many, you know, these residents suffering property damage and, and significant financial loss. So no matter who comes after me, whether I decide to run or not, or whatever, we need to be able to have a system and a, and a position set up so it can be handed off to the next person, that is Drain Commissioner, for the good of these people, so they don't have to worry that, you know, uh, they're gonna have to go through this again, um, every ten years or so. And you take a look at that big storm event that went through, uh, Houghton, had that been a hundred miles south, we'd be talking a whole different story right now here. So we have to have these structures maintained to the best possible extent and continued maintenance of those, so that when those events happen, yes, there's gonna be property damage, but hopefully it's a lot less than what it would be.
Best case scenario, you know, we go and say, all right, we're gonna make it full-time for rest of the year. What do you think you could get accomplished in this whole backlog of everything that you've given us?
Well, number one, I would get, be able to get that SAW grant executed and get that moving. We need to get that going, um, because there's a lot of field review, there's a lot of, um, you know, review by, um, to determine, you know, watershed boundaries. We have to get these, you know, digitized. So first thing, you know, first things first, well, Old Mission Drain, sorry, okay? Old Mission Drain, get that out there, get that short-term maintenance done, um, get the SAW grant done, get the Duck Lake, um, you know, Special Assessment District done, and get Cass Road, um, on schedule to be done next year. And, uh, and then the following year, uh, we'll be looking at, um, and, and sorry, Chris, but we'll be looking at, uh, Deep Out of Point Drain, and, um, and Silver Lake would be in that mix as well, getting a special assessment. So there's a lot that has to happen in this first year.
Do you see a point where, and again, say, best case scenario, we say, all right, to the end of your term, 'cause you got, what, two and a half years left? That we, we move it to full-time. Would you think at the end of that, that you would have enough of this set in place and in motion where someone might be able to do it part-time after that? If you already had the maintenance programs and the schedules and all that set up?
Let's, let's get to that point.
Well, and, and that's exactly the problem.
Let's get to that point.
That's exactly how we got where we're at right now, is the fact we had a, had a long period of time that, that nothing was done and no one was talking about drains, and there was, there was nothing being done with drains. We were expending a certain amount of funds every year for the Drain Commissioner, and yet when we look at the annual reports, we looked at what we were talking about was being done, the cost to benefit ratio just didn't work. So, so now we're in a situation where, okay, we have, we have this workload, how do we figure out a way to get that workload done? I, I'm not, I'm not completely excited about the idea of changing the salary. I'm, I'm trying to figure out some way to say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna assess so much for each of the drains. And Chris, can you tell me, can we do that, or how would we...
Well, we'd, we'd have to take a look at the drain code. I know, I, I looked at Duck Lake, um, the inland lake part that allows setting up a special assessment.
Well, and we know, we know that the, the two lake levels can't be included in the SAW grant. I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we do the maintenance plans for these other drains.
Yeah, I mean, that's something, that's something I'd have to look into. I don't, I can't give you off the cuff.
You know, Steve, Steve had a slide up here a few minutes ago that showed he needed $10,000 for the Old Mission Drain, and $10,000 for the Cass Road Drain, okay? And I'm assuming that doesn't include any administrative costs.
Silver Lake, yeah, Silver Lake and Old Mission, yes. Uh, no, I mean, that, that's no admin, because that's part of my Drain Commission duties as Drain Commissioner. You can't circumvent the position, you know? And that's, and, uh, it's the duties of Drain Commissioner, that's why Drain Commissioner is the oldest law in the books.
I'm concerned about Old Mission. You know, to wait until we've set up an assessment, you know?
Can't.
We, we can't. So, uh, Chris, can we, we were thinking about the way we, or was Dean, I forgot, if we, front that $10,000, can that later be billed back to the Assessment District? It can be?
Yes.
So that, that's what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying, you know? I, I have no problem, obviously, this is a study session, so we're not, we're not gonna have any motions or decisions here tonight, but I have no problem going forward in our next meeting and, you know, asking Dean to, to find the funds, per se, you know? What, you know, and we're, we know that we're probably going to use it from fund balance or something, you know, to allocate funds to the Drain Commissioner's office to develop these maintenance plans and do the short-term maintenance. I, I, I don't have any problem making that motion. My problem is figuring out how do I properly fund the Office of Drain Commissioner to administer that? Because what I'm, what I'm being told is because these drains are already in place, they are the responsibility of the Drain Commissioner. Is that correct, Chris?
Right.
So, you know, so, obviously, I, I can fund the maintenance, I can fund the development of the maintenance plan, that we can move, we can move forward with easily, and that cost will all be re, recouped, if you will, when the Special Assessment Districts are in place. But I have to have someone to administer that and get it rolling, and that's the responsibility of the Drain Commissioner's office. And obviously, on eight hours a week, or whatever the number is, you know, we're not, that we're funding, he, he can't get all of this stuff done. You know, obviously, we, we've gotten to a point where the workload has piled up because of the fact that nothing's been done for many, many years.
Other focuses.
And now all of a sudden, we're, on the drains, and now all of a sudden, we're in a, you know, I, I hate to say it's a critical situation, but, but we, we truly need to invest money in these drains, and we need to do it sooner rather than later. So we're gonna have to figure out a way, you know, at least in my mind, to, to front some money to move forward with this, but also, we're going to have to figure out a way to fund the establishment of those Special Assessment Districts, and that's the responsibility of the, of the Drain Commissioner's office.
And that's why I'm...
And that's the, the only way we can recover the money, is with the establishment of the Special Assessment Districts, and it doesn't do us any good to upfront the money if we don't fund some way to get the, get the ball moving forward and, and proceed with the creation of the Special Assessment Districts.
Tom?
Yeah, we're behind on our responsibility for all these drains, and, uh, and we're not paying you enough for the time that you put in right now. But I'm interested, were you able to find out what, uh, what the job duties were for Maureen Templeton and what the rate was back then?
Yeah, the, her pay then was $56,000 a year plus benefits. That was back in 2004, I believe it was.
And besides the drains, what else was she involved in?
She had soil erosion as well, yeah. And her, her duties varied depending on, you know, if they were setting up a, you know, a drainage district versus, you know, just doing the maintenance right after these drains were installed, they were obviously didn't need to be maintained, you know, as regularly, and then it turned out that they weren't maintained at all. So at that time, it was $56,000 in 2004.
Okay, but that included stormwater and soil erosion?
Soil erosion, and, um, but, you know...
And stormwater was a big part of that. Those are the most complex, um, calculations.
And that's why you get an engineer.
It was a big part of that. So, you know, to translate what both Drain Commissioners got then to now, um, when you're not doing the, the stormwater piece, and you're not doing the soil erosion piece, we have to think about that.
I am doing the stormwater piece to a degree, and I will find out...
But not to the extent that they did in the old days, where, where every, where the county had a stormwater ordinance and every piece of property had to go through that. Uh, that's not something you do now.
To, to some degree, yes, and I'll find out more. Still do. So I, you know, and, and what I'm saying is...
Wait a second, now townships have stormwater ordinances, you don't administer those.
Uh, some townships do, and, and it depends, and again, I'll find out, I'll find out for sure, I can, you know, work with Chris and Silver Council.
Do you have an intergovernment agreement with any townships to administer stormwater?
I don't know. I don't believe so.
Okay.
Right, the, the county at one time had stormwater ordinance.
But they don't now.
But we don't now, and it is a, it's a township, local unit responsible.
That, that being said, stormwater is always going to affect the county-owned drains. The, 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 the drains that we have developed and are responsible to maintain are always going to be affected by stormwater.
I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing that, what I'm arguing is...
We, we no longer have to do the engineering and the, 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 the plan reviews of everything to make sure the stormwater is taken care of, but the bottom line is, if that plan review that happened 20 years ago is not adequate, that, that stormwater is going to affect these county drains.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, yes, Tom?
Yeah, if we go back to, uh, what Mr. Detmer was talking about, and maybe one or two other people mentioned, you know, actually having more duties, can you mention what a couple of those would be if you increased the duties?
Yeah, I mean, um, I am a certified, you know, stormwater inspector, you know, went through the, and got the certification for, you know, so that's a, that's a possibility that, that could also be, assist, you know, um, soil erosion during times of high volume, uh, permit volume. But what I'm most concerned about right now is getting these drains ma, back to where they need to be, so that they're maintained. We can continue to look at, you know, as, um, Mr. Detmer had mentioned, you know, some type of a water commissioner that can be doing a lot of other things, there's a lot of grants out there that can be obtained, as something I'm very, you know, experienced at is grant writing, and, you know, so we don't know, we don't, you know, is, there's a lot of possibilities. All I know is right now, for the next, you know, two and a half years of my term, it's gonna be full-time getting these drains back to the, where they need to be, and getting the SAW grant administered.
I didn't, I mean, I didn't read the full hundred and something pages of that Storm Act. Can we, with that being elected position and most of that being, uh, statutorily set, can we say to him, you're gonna have to do other duties? Or, you know, 'cause I, again, I go back to with it being elected position, you're certified, you said, for storm...
Storm and soil, soil erosion.
You know, so he could probably do that in addition, but if somebody else does win an election, what can the board itself or the county say? Well, in addition to your normal Drain Commissioner duties, we want you to do X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, you can assign other duties.
You can, you can do that, you, you can. I mean, the general rule is that you have to fulfill your statutory duties.
Yeah, those first, yeah.
And then, yes, if you take on additional responsibilities, you typically should receive some type of compensation for those duties. So you can, as long as you're not conflicting with other areas of the law. So for, for example, for, for soil erosion, if Steve wanted to take on responsibilities for soil erosion, we're gonna have to comply with Part 91 of NARIPA, we'd have to go through a process with DEQ. We already have an ordinance in place that says we have a soil erosion department. So it's not, it's not, in that situation, it's not as simple as, yes, Steve, you're gonna have to start doing soil erosion work now, instead, we'd have to work through a process with, with DEQ on that.
But I could assist them, could I not?
You know, we, I, I think so, Steve, but, um, again, I, I'd wanna check with DEQ on that.
That's just one of the possibilities, you know, but there's a lot of possibilities, but again, the focus right now has to be on these drains.
And see, one of the, one of the issues with raising the salary is unless you worded it right for the next two and a half years, you can't lower, you know?
After, yeah, you came before the next election.
Yeah, we came before the next election, we couldn't, if, if we say in another year and a half, you got everything done, all right, and it was, ended up being a half-time position, I know. Again, best case scenario, I live, I live in vacation land, as everyone says, so. And we found that was, you know, truly gonna be a half-time or three-quarter time position, and we did wanna reduce it. You couldn't reduce it until the next round of the election, so I, I, you know, that's kinda what I struggle with.
That's where, that's where we were at the last time.
But I, I, I guess, my thought on it right now is it definitely sounds full-time. I mean, I came in here, I can tell you right now, fully against this, saying there's no way, but as I listen to everything that we, and when I say we, Drain and the county, have not kept up on, through whatever, you know, lack of knowledge or anything, um, of what all we needed to do, we, we have a duty now to fix this. You know, there's no way with what I've heard today or tonight that I consider and say, no, we're not gonna do anything, because we ha, I think, we have an obligation to do it now. So my thought is, how do we do that? Do we just go ahead and say, all right, let's figure out in the budget where we can just make this full-time, and then readdress it before the next election? You know, quite frankly, to me, that's almost the cleanest way to do it. Now, the other issue with that is where do you set the salary? But, um, and it goes also with fronting the money right now to get these drains cleaned up, we gotta get them cleaned up.
Yeah, we gotta front the money.
You know, I, I think we're in a corner. I really think we're in a corner.
You know, I, I tried to put, I've tried to put numbers to this thing in a half a dozen different directions, you know, and, and what I, what I come up with is, we have to upfront $20,000 to do the maintenance of the drains, you know, which, which, that money can be recouped, you know? But somehow or another, I think we have to figure out a way to fund the Drain Commissioner's office an additional, I'm, I'm saying $4,000 a month for the next five months, so we need $20,000 to the Drain Commissioner's office, figuring that his salary right now is about $600 a month, it's $60,000 a year, that's, that's $5,000 a month, so we need another $4,000 a month for the next five months, and then we need to evaluate how, what we're gonna do in our 2019 budget. You know, I, I don't, I don't believe that, that funding the position for, for five months and then determining that we're not going to fund it in the 2019 budget makes any sense, you know? So, so I think we have to have, we have to have a real legitimate discussion when we talk about how we, at what level we fund the Drain Commissioner's office for the remaining five months of 2018, that we at least fund that portion through the 2019 budget and see where we get to.
My, my request is for three-quarter time, because, uh, and from now for the remainder of the calendar year, because I cannot leave the Conservation District in a lurch. You know, I work full-time for the Grand, Grand Travis Conservation District, um, and so what I'm saying is three-quarters time as Drain Commissioner would get a lot of things going, it would allow me to then trans, uh, to train somebody in my position at the, at the Conservation District? Yes, sir?
I'm sorry, Steve, would the Conservation District let you work part-time for them, or do you have to work full-time for them?
I could work part-time, that's what I'm saying, I could work, you know, um, you know, right now, but then, you know, beginning of that, of, of 2019, you know, turn it to full-time, turn full-time attention to these drains and getting them on a, on a maintenance schedule, then get that all ironed out, and then we can take a look at where we are, you know? If it is another term, and whether it's me or not, to set, have somebody full-time in this position, uh, so to make sure that this doesn't happen, that's in maybe looking at other, other, you know, water commission projects and grants and other things that can be done. It's a small price to ensure and provide a service, you know, you know, to these folks, because again, I've been out on Long Lake, there was, you know, um, there was rainwater, a different, you know, property where rainwater was coming on to this guy's property, and it was just, you know, flooding out around his garage. And, uh, so we, you know, I met out there with him, and we came up with an idea for a sump, and I was able to recommend a contractor, you know, and, 'cause he was, this is the only other, you know, really recourse is to sue your neighbor, and you don't wanna do that. So that's the kind of service that you...
We have them all over the county.
Exactly.
I was out with, with some people on South Long Lake Road recently, they have a little cottage that's been there since, you know, multiple generations, and the adjacent property has now put up this great big huge house, and they've got, you know, all these, all these things, and, you know, their, their, their lot is now a foot and a half above the, the front door of the cottage, so every time it rains, the water runs off the roof, runs right down into this guy's front, you know, front door, you know? And, and we're gonna have, we're gonna continue to have those, you know, and, and that's where, you know, the Drain Commissioner has to deal with. and that's where, you know, the Drain Commissioner has to deal with it. But more importantly, it needed to be dealt with-
And during the planning.
-when the house was being built and the plan was done, because that water should not be allowed to run off from those people's property onto the adjacent property. That's, you know, that's the tough piece. And fortunately, in most of our area, our soils are good enough that we can do that. You know, there's, we have a few areas that we can't. But most of our area in this community, our soils are good enough, we can deal with that.
Bob, did you have something else?
Yeah, a couple concerns is, we're talking about taking an elected position, increasing the salary. We've got other elected positions that, you know, and there's a few meetings, a few study sessions left that they could be in here as well, and we could be doing a study session for them. You know, I'm sure everybody's underfunded. I look at our neighboring counties. Leesaw County is the highest-paid-
Drain Commissioner.
Drain Commissioner for the salary, $13,447.
Two drains.
Wexford County, $12,560. You know, it's Calcasca, you know, $2,000. I mean, Charlevoix County, you know, probably not. Heavy soil, probably more rock, but, you know, they're $2,500. And we're talking, we're talking, you know, a $61,000 salary, and I just, I'm not, I'll have to be convinced how we're so much, you know, in such dire straits in this county that the other ones don't have with, you know, Leesaw County has, you know, plenty of lakes and streams as well. But anyway-
They only have two legal drains, and they're not active as far as, you know, needing Special Assessment District.
Okay.
And Wexford County, they have 17 drains. I talked to the Drain Commissioner today, but only one that's active in one lake level, you know, district. And so they don't have the population, they don't have, you know, the needs at this point. And, you know, so that's why you have to look at, you know, some, you know, other drain offices that have a similar workload with the lack of staff, because they're, you know, they usually have, besides the Drain Commissioner, they also have, you know, staffing as well to go with that. And so what I'm telling you as a professional, I've been in this business for, you know, 30 years, this is what it's going to take to get this job done.
Bob, did you have something?
Yeah, looking at those charts there where it says persons in office, is that in addition to the Drain Commissioner? Or does that count the Drain Commissioner? There's a chart that, I think that's what you were looking at, was the-
Yeah, I would have to look at that. I'm assuming it means that-
I mean, the other part of that is kind of alluding to what I was saying earlier. To me is, you'd almost have to look at the conditions of what their drain situation is in each county.
Yes.
You know, is it, you know, if you don't have active drains, then you probably don't have maintenance and everything else that's been involved. If you've got something where you've got active drains, and there was no maintenance done, no plant set aside, then you've got, to get caught up, you've got to put something in there, you know. And again, once you get caught up, you might very well be able to go to part-time or something.
Well, you also have the development.
Yeah, well, that's, and that's going to ebb and flow, you know. As you know, we still only have so much property around here that will really impact it. But, you know, I think that's the thing, you've got to be careful when you compare numbers, is there's a lot more into these numbers. You know, we did a review last year, year before, of all the elected positions.
Year before.
And we compared county to county, and even some of those were very difficult to do. The clerk, you know, did they have the register of deeds, were they, you know, co, that kind of thing. So it's still very difficult to compare without spending a lot of time and making phone calls and doing reports to figure out what are they doing, you know. Because you might look at some of these and go, "Wait a minute, they're getting paid $7,000? That might be too much."
Right, well, right, and what was the, I mean, what did we, what was the end up? You know, what was the bottom line?
We were about the middle of the pack in everything, if I remember correctly. So we changed nothing, because at that point, the ad hoc committee, and I think everybody that kind of was there most of it, felt like we were in a good area.
I was on that committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I don't think we, I don't believe, I know we didn't, if the Drain Commissioner was involved in that, we didn't do an in-depth.
It was the commissioners and the Drain Commissioner were not in that.
And the sheriff.
It was the sheriff, the prosecutor, the register of deeds, the clerk, and the treasurer. That was all we did.
Yeah. And again, again, you have, in this state, you have such a range of population. And then when you compare with the influx of people you have here during the summer months, it's really hard, you're hard-pressed to find light communities that swell, you know, to that level, so.
Steve and I had quite a conversation in March, I think it was March or early April, about Cass Road and the amount of snow that is transported from throughout our community that's dumped on property off from Cass Road.
And that needs to stop.
One of our most, one of our most dangerous drainage districts, and we're dumping thousands and thousands of yards of snow onto that property that's going to melt when the sun comes out, guys.
You mean our county does?
No, 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 private. And so that's where the Drain Commissioner has to have the time to be able to get out and investigate those kinds of things.
Private property was allowing contractors to transport snow onto his property. I'm assuming he was being compensated to some level. And literally thousands and thousands of yards were hauled onto that property every year, and they've been going onto that property every year for as long as I can remember.
And so those kinds of things need to be monitored, and, you know, so, so yes, that's a full-time job, folks.
I have no doubt, it is absolutely a full-time job. It's the numbers and how to figure out what the pay should be is tricky.
Well, yeah, and again, if we get to the point that, like Bob said, we have it all caught up, we have the maintenance plan in place, and we can move forward. We've got an ongoing program where the maintenance is done. Maybe the number doesn't have to be there. Maybe it doesn't have to be 60.
Let's get to that point.
I don't know, that's what we've got to try to figure out.
Get to that point.
But the point is, we've got to get to that point. And we're, I would be absolutely amazed if we could even think that we might be able to get these maintenance plans and these Special Assessment Districts done within the next five years.
Deal.
What's that?
Deal.
You think we can get them done in five years?
You betcha.
I hope you're right.
Tom?
Yeah, I don't think we should use the 10-county area of northwestern Michigan for very much when it comes to making economic comparisons. Networks Northwest has done a study, and I was told specifically that it wouldn't really help us, because every other county is so much smaller in economy than ours, as far as structures, people, whatever you want to count. And we really need to come to some kind of an agreement as a county, what we are comparing ourselves to. So maybe down by, you know, some other Lake Michigan shore county that has a large population or similar to ours, you know, that has some of the features that we have, increases in population, recreation, whatever that may be. But I don't think we should be really comparing ourselves, it's not going to lead us to any outcome to compare ourselves with the other nine counties in our 10-county area, really, because we're leading the county, northwestern Michigan. We're the leaders, and we're the leaders not just because of, you know, we say we are, we're the leaders because of our size and the size of our economy, it's just entirely different. We need to find a couple, two or three counties in the state that have to follow by the same rules as we do, and we need to come to some kind of an agreement as to what those counties are, and then we can compare ourselves. I mean, when it comes to receiving the audit, which we got at our last regular meeting, I think we should be comparing ourselves somewhere financially to the other counties as well, because I know that they would not be spending their money just like we spend our money. There's got to be differences, and we need to find out what those are. We might find some cost-saving measures and some other ideas just by comparing ourselves with counties we can actually compare ourselves to realistically, and that's really my point. We need to come to an agreement on what those places are and use them, you know. Compare something that is equal to us, to us, so that we can learn to run things better. Not just compare us to how we were a year ago, five years ago, just comparing ourselves to ourselves. To me, that doesn't make much sense, actually, at all, so that's what I'd like to do. And seeking input on that, anybody that wants to contact me on those comparative counties, maybe the city of Marquette, the county they're in is comparable, maybe Midland is comparable, maybe Grand Haven is comparable, you know, let's figure that out. And then when it comes to some day like this, where we have to think about how much we're going to spend, we'll have much, we'll have much more information on which to compare to, so that we're not just comparing ourselves to our neighboring counties, because that doesn't lead to anything, in my opinion, so.
Bob?
Yeah, to go along with that, when you look at the southern Michigan county list, you also got to keep in mind that, you know, you see, like, Alleghen, the guy's, or, not the guy, but the Drain Commissioner's making $74,000, but it looks to me like there are also, there are seven persons in the office that they're overseeing. So you'd have that that would affect into the wage also, you know.
And they're doing stormwater, and they're doing-
Yeah, they're doing soil erosion.
Yeah, so that, those kinds of salaries are being commanded there. Some of those people have, like, 300 drains, you know, and so I'm not saying we shouldn't improve Steve's salary. I think we should, but I think we need to be careful that we do it right.
Right now, I supervise, you know, I've supervised, right now, four staff as Land Management Director for the Conservation District. I've been doing that for, you know, over a dozen years now. And so, you know, that part of it is actually not that difficult to tell somebody else, you know, direct them and make sure that they're doing their job. It's making sure that job gets done. And so if I had four or five staff here under me as Drain Commissioner, I'd love it, but it's-
Well, I'm just saying, though, that currently, you don't do that.
No, but the level of skill, the level of, you know, professional knowledge is still the same, you know, and I've supervised people, you know, I've, you know, but this, you know, this is, you don't want somebody who's not a professional in doing this job.
And to go along with that, again, goes back to me, the thought that we're so behind on where we need to be at even right now. Where in these other counties, the other counties, they may already have all the plans and everything set.
Right, I agree.
So things may be rolling good.
We're playing catch-up ball.
Yes, we're playing major catch-up.
Yep, I get it.
So, Sonny?
Chris, you know, I know this is a study session, and we're not making any motions. So what I'm going to suggest, and you tell me that I, you have to tell me if I need to sit down and shut up, but I'm going, I'm going to suggest that we just take a little head-knocking thing and ask Dean to try to identify where we would fund $20,000 for the short-term maintenance of these drains that Steve has asked for tonight, and $15,000 to help manage his office. And at our next meeting, you know, if we have, if we have some head-knocking that people are willing to have some discussion about this, at least it gives Dean an opportunity to identify where those funds might be able to come from.
I would throw in there also the pre-funding.
That's what he's talking about.
He put it in there.
That's the $20,000 to pre-fund the maintenance of those two drains, and $15,000 to administer that.
Dean, do you have time to do that before next Wednesday?
Well, just if I could make a couple of comments.
Sure.
There's always different ways that you can do this. I mean, the county board could say that we're going to appropriate $10,000 to each of the two drains that Steve mentioned, that would be an outright expenditure in your general fund, and you wouldn't require that to be repaid. I would not recommend that. I would recommend that you actually advance additional funds to your drain revolving fund.
Yes.
And then use those funds to do the maintenance and to do what needs to be done, but then expect that to be recovered through the Special Assessment District. So it's not a budget issue at all if you go the latter route.
Well, no, but we still have to identify where the money's coming from.
Well, I can tell you right now, you have the cash reserves, and you have the ability in your general fund to do that. You know, we had a pretty good year. You have the fund balance that could absorb that, so I don't need to spend any time. If that's what you decide to do, just increase the advance, you know, to your-
You know, and like I said, we can't vote here tonight, we can't make a motion tonight.
No, but I can put it on next Wednesday's meeting.
But we will put it on next Wednesday's agenda to make an advance to the revolving drain fund and make an adjustment in the Drain Commissioner's budget.
And his salary.
Let me ask this. If we, if we raise his salary right now to the end of the year, is it in how you word it for 2019 and '20? Or are we stuck at, worst-case scenario, you're stuck at paying them the whatever, whatever that amounts to for- Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I would personally, I would just like to see it all resolved at the next meeting for this year and for the next two years. What are we going to do?
For 2019 and '20?
We can put it on for discussion for next week.
That way, we're not kicking this thing continually, is my thought. I'd rather just see it all in one package, but-
Chris, if we adjust his salary for the remainder of 2018, does that number automatically move forward into 2019?
No, I think if you have language in the resolution, say, you know, the salary is limited to the remainder of 2018, then I think you'll be okay and you'll be covered.
Because we will establish a salary for that office, you know, for 2019 in the 2019 budget.
I mean, if, because that'd be my concern, if you have a worded white, white. I thought this meeting was going to be about an hour or something. So I think, you know, that will give the administration time then for '19 to come up with a good plan and what's a good amount, so.
Yeah, we could certainly, I can certainly work with Dean and Nate to come up with the resolution. They would probably say what's just been said here, that it's set for the remainder of 2018, and then, you know, be a further resolve that for years 2019, it will be, you know, established during the budget process, something like that.
Okay, so we'll put it in that for next? I don't know, Chris. Okay, and I'm sure she's watching, so we need to add that to the agenda for next week.
Thank you for listening.
Anybody have anything else?
I'm sure glad we had a study session.
Oh, I am too, actually.
And this is, this is one of those issues that becomes very complicated, and it really needs to be talked around from a multitude of different directions, you know. It's not, it's not a simple decision, because there's, you know, and we didn't get here overnight, so we're not going to get out of here overnight either.
But thank you for all the information. Now I actually know exactly what we're talking about, exactly what you do. Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
It's a good deal of information.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, so we move into second public comment. Does anybody have any? No, we're good? You have to step up to the microphone if you want to, and I'll let you.
Connie Sargent, 3990 Swainee, out in the Village of Old Mission. I want to thank you for your discussion. I want to, I've learned a lot even from the other areas and from Steve. So I am thrilled that we're going to have $10,000 to get that main ditch, but we also need to get that Brinkman Road with the culvert looked at. Then we can do the assessment for all the rest of the crap up there, you know. But those things are so critical, so critical for all of us people in the Village of Old Mission. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else have a brief comment?
Again, Alan Strange, 5091 Case Court. We should thank the members. It sounds like we might have $10,000 to the Civil Association for this strange thing. I myself appreciate that as a resident of the lake. I have worked with Steve many times. We will put that money to well-used. I volunteer my time. The stuff will be used very wisely, the minimum that we can do to get the maximum that we can. I thank you for the money that may be coming. We appreciate that immensely. Yes, it will be used very wisely. Yes, it will be used very wisely and there will be a lot of time spent volunteer wise to make it go as far as we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good job.